Buenos días, Los Ángeles. Estamos aquí para el punto. Donde nos reunimos todos los martes, viernes, a las 10 de la mañana en el 13:40. Los primeros viernes nos reunimos. Pero si no estamos aquí en las sociedades del consejales. Bienvenidos nuestros televidentes del 35. Great station to catch up on your city and the news that is making a difference in your communities. And we are rebroadcast in the evening. And we also are available through the city's website at la-city.org. Where you can click on the link to our live streaming video. And finally, you can always call in if you're close to a phone to council phone. At 213-621-CITY. Which is a city audio service where you can listen to the committee hearings or the full council meeting via your own telephone. That number is 213-621-CITY. We invite members of the public to give public testimony on items that have been agendized for a public hearing. All items that the city council considers have a public hearing either in committee or in the full council. And you can always get a copy of your agendas at la-city.org. In the back of our council chambers here or through the city clerk's office. So we invite you to view those agendas 72 hours in advance. For our special agendas, 24 hours in advance, those are available to the public. You can also testify during general public comment, which is for items that have been not agendized but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. And so we also invite you to come down here and testify live. If you live closer to Van Nuys, you can always go to our Van Nuys City Hall and testify remotely from there. And we are able to watch you here, vice versa. When we need in Van Nuys, you can always testify live from City Hall. We have right now nine members present pursuant to council rules on time. Councilmembers Rule, Han, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Wesson, Zine, and myself. We're waiting one more council member. Councilmember Weezar is excused today on city business, but we're expecting all other members here. So councilmember Cardenas, councilmember Rosendahl, councilmember Smith, and councilmember Weiss. As soon as one of you joins us, we will begin the meeting. Thank you all, and good night. Thank you, councilmembers Zine. Buenos dias, Los Angeles. Estamos aquí para el punto. Donde nos reunimos todos los martes, viernes, a las 10 de la mañana en el 13:40. Los primeros viernes nos reunimos. Pero si no estamos aquí en las sociedades del consejales. Bienvenidos nuestros televidentes del 35. Great station to catch up on your city and the news that is making a difference in your communities. And we are rebroadcast in the evening. And we also are available through the city's website at la-city.org. Where you can click on the link to our live streaming video. And finally, you can always call in if you're close to a phone to council phone. At 213-621-CITY. Which is a city audio service where you can listen to the committee hearings or the full council meeting via your own telephone. That number is 213-621-CITY. We invite members of the public to give public testimony on items that have been agendized for a public hearing. All items that the city council considers have a public hearing either in committee or in the full council. And you can always get a copy of your agendas at la-city.org. In the back of our council chambers here or through the city clerk's office. So we invite you to view those agendas 72 hours in advance. For our special agendas, 24 hours in advance, those are available to the public. You can also testify during general public comment, which is for items that have been not agendized but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. And so we also invite you to come down here and testify live. If you live closer to Van Nuys, you can always go to our Van Nuys City Hall and testify remotely from there. And we are able to watch you here, vice versa. When we need in Van Nuys, you can always testify live from City Hall. We have right now nine members present pursuant to council rules on time. Councilmembers Rule, Han, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Wesson, Zine, and myself. We're waiting one more council member. Councilmember Weezar is excused today on city business, but we're expecting all other members here. So councilmember Cardenas, councilmember Rosendahl, councilmember Smith, and councilmember Weiss. As soon as one of you joins us, we will begin the meeting. Thank you all, and good night. Cardenas, Grohan, Weezar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President. First order of business, please? Approval of the minutes. Mr. Reyes moves and Mr. Zine seconds. If there's no objection, those will be unanimously approved. Commendatory resolutions for approval. All right, Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Parks seconds. If there's no objection, those two will be approved. And Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute. Well, I know we've got a number of distinguished guests in the audience, and it's difficult to pick just one. But Mr. Our good friend Chip Murray, I was wondering if you would be kind enough to come to the podium and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, which we have each week at the beginning of the week for our meetings. If I can ask everybody, please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Would you please place your hands over your hearts? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, and if I could, we've been doing moments of inspiration in the past, but it's been some time. And I know this is also spontaneous. But Bishop Blake, would you be kind enough to come forward and give us a moment of inspiration to begin our meeting? It would be an honor.
Well, it's an honor to be here this morning. I am here to possibly say a word to the city council later on. But it is very special that we're here at this very special time. I suppose this is the first council meeting of Black History Month. And we certainly celebrate it. And we are noticing that it's significant that we're here on this very special day. Thanks to all who serve our city, who work, who plan, and who strategize for the good of our city. It's good to say the pledge of allegiance. I realized when we were saying it together how seldom we have the opportunity. Our pledge and our allegiance and our commitment to this great nation of ours. We have a great nation, and the city council exemplifies the democratic process. Know that we're praying for you and your work. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much, Bishop Blake. Appreciate your words of inspiration. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, I have noticed for public hearings, items 1 through 6 are street widening, district ordinances. And I believe 12 council members will be present today to wish to hold those on the desk.
Yes, please, let's hold those till we have a proper member.
Items 7 through 17 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 7 is a commissioner.
Yeah, it's definitely hold 7 on the desk. And that will be before council 8 through 17. All right, specials calling? Are there specials calling? Hay algunas especiales, señor presidente, solamente para información de consejal en el número 14. La agenda es... La dirección está mal, el número comité. Se escribió 1277 North Wilcox and 6516 West Fountain. 6516, okay. Got the 6 and the 5 reversed there. To make sure that that is corrected. Any other specials, Mr. Parks? 13 for Mr. Parks. El 13 del señor Parks. Mr. Labonge, you're good at number 8. Usted quiere decir el número 8, está bien. Any other specials, colleague? Hay algunos especiales, tenemos 12 miembros. Okay, considering number 8, which is an ordinance as well. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. 12, vamos a abrir el... Cierrelo y tabule los votos. 12, 6, Mr. Labonge. Number 8. Number 8, forthwith if there is no objection. In honor of the presence of Anton Pala. And let's go back to items 1 through 6. Vamos a ver del 1 al 6, que tenemos 12 miembros presentes. Alguien hablar algunos como si fueran especiales, si no, vamos a abrir la votación. Cerramos la votación y la tabulamos. 12, 6, están aprobados. Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 18 through 28. Okay, colleagues, any specials 18 through 28, Mr. Parks? Del 18 al 28. Señor Parks, señor reporte, el número 19, señor Parks. Si no hay opresión, vamos a tomar eso fuera de orden. El señor tengo 20, del señor Rosendahl. Any other specials, colleagues? Hay algunos especiales, el señor Rosendahl tiene usted también en el número 26 y el 27. Muy bien, 26 y 27 especiales. También tengo aquí la número 19, que es el señor Parks. También está hablando la especial. Vamos a hacer los otros en esto y nos... Do we need a motion on 18? Si, porque estaba haciendo el comité, el comité supuso que era el 10001B1. Hay alguna moción en esa? Was that a communication? Esa fue una comunicación, fue una comunicación del alcalde. Señor Zine? Después en nuestro junta y antes de la junta esta semana. Que si queremos hacer una moción en ella, muy bien, es el número 9. Va en el saldo, hay que cerrar, tabule los votos. 12, 6, están aprobados. Le vamos a tomar el comentario público, hay algún comentario a una agencia especial de las 6:30? Si, hay una especial y es para el día 15. Okay, let's go ahead, why don't we go to that and call the roll, please? Cardenas, Grohan, Weezar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. Twelve members present and a quorum, Mr. President. Okay. Anybody wishing to call 29 special? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote. 12, 6. That is approved. Let's go back to public comment now. Our first bit of public comment is Mr. Zuma Dogg out in Van Nuys. And then we'll go to Dave Thompson here in council chambers. Mr. Dogg.
Yes, thank you, councilmember Garcetti. Y'all like to pledge of allegiance to the flag on Tuesday. Zuma Dogg likes to do a little First Amendment check. So I'm gonna say, "Zuma Dogg, let me do what I do. Don't make me have to call ACLU. Zuma Dogg better do what you're supposed to. Don't make me have to call Meritonio Villargos, sir."
You could please adjust the council on an item before us enter our jurisdiction. Thank you.
My timer, this First Amendment protected, so let it be known for the record, he wouldn't let me do it. Also, I'd like to thank John and Ken, the Mr. KBC Show, Kevin James, the LAIS blog, the mayor Sam blog, and everybody else who was talking about Zuma Dogg on Friday on the radio and blogs, because they loved Zuma Dogg's public comment on Friday, y'all. But excuse me, city council, Shelley Sloan is being mean to Zuma Dogg, y'all. Now, you all know Shelley Sloan, because he's giving thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to the mayor and to all 50 city council members. And he's the president of the California State Bar Association. So he wrote a letter to my boss, Mayor Sam. I'm a journalist, I have credibility I've tried to maintain. He wrote a letter to my boss, Mayor Sam, and says, "Zuma Dogg is clearly biased, y'all." And I like to say, "Zuma Dogg." Was I clearly biased when I talked about the LAX worker increase? When I didn't even want to put that? I didn't even want to talk that stuff. But Janice, I was nice enough to give me the argument, so I said I'm gonna say it. Things on the gang, things with the gang prevention, I speak on both sides, LA, USA, I speak about both sides and everything. So I'd like to say, "Oh, by the way, Shelley Sloan also happens to be a lobbyist on behalf of construction and real estate interests." And excuse me, everybody knows my number one topic's been construction and real estate interests, because it's been... Hello? And so anyway, I'd like to say, I think it's a disgrace that you have Shelley Sloan, president of the California Bar, and who's paying all of you right there in city council and the mayor thousands of dollars to tens of thousands. And he is upset that Zuma Dogg is doing public comment. That's a disgrace. Tell him to stop picking on Zuma Dogg.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dogg. Appreciate your testimony. Dave Thompson is our next speaker, and then Chuck Tannen. Mr. Thompson? Agradecemos su declaración, señor Thompson, es nuestro próximo orador, señor Thompson.
I'm Dave Thompson, I've been a resident of Los Angeles for about eight years. First, I want to thank the president of Garcetti for having us. Gracias, quiero primero quiero agradecer al señor Garcetti por hacer este comentario público. Si las personas que se levantan aquí tres veces. El señor que estaba muy colorido, le dio crédito y lo dejó que estuviera aquí. Muy bien, quiero agradecer al señor Garcetti por ser tan democrático. Deja que las personas dejan... Leí un comentario que hizo en una prensa. Mi opinión, Hollywood been transformed by Mr. Garcetti. He used to be a slum down at a beautiful building, etc., etc. I want to talk about the mayor. The mayor has lived in a house where his father was an alcoholic and grew up with physical abuse apparently. And he hasn't done one thing to help kids get all drugs. I appeared at a transition house about a month ago. And what I said at that is filled with black people. And I said, "What happens if black people are the heroes of our country? From where they've come and the burdens they've overcome, they're the heroes." And he liked what I had to say, because they are. Tonight, I'm appearing in a mental health hospital. But the daily news is always into politics. Here they have an article about... Y tienen un artículo acerca de los consejales que fueron derrotados por las industrias. Millions of dollars, by not putting them on the ballot. They did what was best for the public, they didn't care what... And here's another one. Mayor Ochoa, el señor Cherish Porter. Mr. Han was elected to public service. And as a result of that, he got Mr. Bratton as police chief. Mr. Bratton substantially reduced crime, but Mr. Han wasn't re-elected, because the daily news consistently made him look in a bad light. I'm asking the daily move to get out of politics and treat the city council fairly like it should be treated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, thank you for the kind words. Chuck Tannen is our next speaker.
Good morning, city council members. Chuck Tannen, Valley Village. I wanted to talk about B permit applications, which is for extensive street repairs, which are not included in an MND for tentative track map approval that's used in the demolitions of existing buildings by a developer to develop. Extensive street repairs defined as storm drains, sewers, street widening. All three have a potential negative cumulative environmental impact on a community. A B permit is only filed by a developer after city planning is issued. Final track map conditions that comes after the demolition process, not before, and is not included in a track map approval. If a developer gets a tentative track map approval based on the current MND checklist, then a building can be demolished and the land sits vacant. When the track map conditions are issued, if a developer decides not to comply or decides to sell, it sits vacant and the tenants are displaced and affordable housing is lost. It should not be demolished, building should not be demolished first, and then mitigation conditions considered are heard or met after, before a tentative track map is approved. It's like flipping a building, because the market changes and the developer sells, or a developer can't meet the conditions or the cost. A B permit after the fact has a cumulative potentially negative environmental impact on redevelopment areas. Don't demolish first, it's poor planning. Build, don't build first and demolish first and then build. It reflects on the city planning and the city council as well. It's poor planning, it should be included in a tentative track map. Street sewers and street widening, which are mitigatable conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tannen. That closes our general public comment for today. If we can go to item number 19, I believe was called special by Mr. Parks. And he asked for that to be taken out of order, if there's no objection. I know, among other guests, we have our postmaster general here from City of Los Angeles. And it's an honor to have him, and with that, turn over to Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate you bringing this out of order for us. Today, although it's Black History Month, we've been working on this for a number of weeks. And I want to thank Mrs. Perry and also Mrs. Rule for seconding the motion, getting it started. And Mr. Wesson wanted to be on it, but was ill that week. And so certainly, he is a part of this effort to bring this stamp to a reality. Want to thank Mr. Smith for weighing it out of committee so we can get moving on it. Just to give you a little background, we started this, we thought that under the rules to get a heritage stamp, that Mr. Bradley would have to been passed away for 10 years. The rules changed as of January this year, it's only five years. So when we thought we're getting a head start on this process, we're really in a sense of a two-year or so process, moving forward to make it occur. What we wanted to do, starting off before we had a number of speakers, Mr. Dozier, who is the public relations person for the US Post Office is here. Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Dozier to come up to the table and explain to us what the process is and what the timing is. Why don't you come up here? And then we'll have the speakers come up as to their support of it.
Good morning. Buenos dias. The council member and everyone here. My name is Larry Dozier. And when we were called to... And told what... And told what... While we was getting involved with this event. We were excited about it. So we are here to provide the guidelines for... To move forward in a commemorative stamp for the late Mayor Charlie Bradley. Now, the postal service... El departamento de correos recibe 50,000 sugerencias al año para las estampillas commemorativas. Y tenemos la ciudad, el comité de los ciudadanos. Ellos son los responsables, que pasan las 50,000 recomendaciones y las estampillas y los timbres. Las recomiendan a nuestro postmaster. Hay de 25 al año, de hecho vienen estampillas commemorativas. En selecting these stamps, the committee looks for people bases and events that are national appeal and that are popular, not just to... No solamente para las personas que coleccionan las estampillas, sino para los individuos en general. Y generalmente para un individuo, para que sea honrado con una estampilla commemorativa. Tenemos que tener 10 años, pero como el consejal Parks lo dijo, al principio de este año es la ley cambio y ahora son 5 años. Entonces, por eso, una vez más, las estampillas son como fotos de las personas y de los lugares, de los eventos, que son importantes para los americanos. Y generalmente, el señor Mario Ready cae en esta categoría. Proporcionamos a este comité para poner esta iniciativa. Y somos parte de esto, y continuamos, estamos ayudando en cualquier manera para que este proceso se continúe.
Thank you, Mr. Dozier. Just sit there, because there may be some questions later.
Porque a lo mejor vamos a preguntar algunas preguntas. Lo queremos compartir con los consejales también, con el presidente, señores Smith. Y nuestro jefe del... What I'd like to do is share with the council, if we could pass around... Aquí hay unas estampillas que hizo en algunas, y con las cuales estamos trabajando. Si puede pasar estas, por favor. But these are things that will go forward. The reason that we're after the heritage stamp, if I understand it correctly, is the stamp that comes out during Black History Month. Es la estampilla que viene durante el mes de historia africana.
This is correct. Each year, we issue a black heritage stamp. And that stamp is usually issued at the end of January. And this, it's for January. To begin celebrating Black History Month in February. So it's just one stamp in that city.
And also, you might comment to the council and to the public that's listening, what's unique about the day that stamp is issued? Qué piensa usted acerca de los vastos?
No, I said, "What is unique about the day of the ceremony?"
Qué es lo único acerca de la fecha? It's called the first day of issue ceremony. And usually, generally, that ceremony takes place in a city that's important to the individual, that's more important to the individual or the institution, donde esto está sucediendo. Y la estampilla que se va a expedir para el mayor, alcalde Bradley, será expedida en esta ciudad. Probablemente, el día de su cumpleaños, en ese día en particular, será el único lugar que la estampilla puede comprar. Y después será vendida nacionalmente el próximo día. Sería el primer día, sería el único lugar en la ciudad donde puede comprarse. Muchas gracias. Quiero, señor, uno de nuestros oradores para que apoyen. Quiere hacer, en qué orden esto, hay algún... Dominic Rubicava and Charles Blake.
I'm gonna bring them in in some order here. Okay, go ahead. If we can start with Ms. Lorraine Bradley, Mayor Bradley's daughter, to come up. Also, a member of our city's family, as a commissioner with the Human Relations Commission.
Always an honor to have you here. Gracias por tenernos aquí. No necesito decirles, no necesito decirles lo importante que esto será para mí, para mi madre, para mi hermana.
What's important, that this is for myself, my mother, my sister, and for all the work that my dad did for the city of Los Angeles, for the people of Los Angeles, and what an honor this would be for all of us. And so, I would appreciate it that... I appreciate the fact that Councilman Parks and Grue, and Mr. Wesson also, supported this, but Councilman Parks began it and started it, and got us to write letters and get the ball rolling. But thank you all, and we look forward to the success of this project. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Let me ask Mr. Anton Calia, former chief of staff, and the mayor to come up and make some comments.
Thank you, Councilman. Like Lorraine, I don't need to tell you where I stand. I think this is a move that's well deserved by my former boss, and I thank you for it. Thank you.
And then we'd ask Mr. E.T. Birds, a former member of the mayor's staff, general manager of Warden Power, and also executive director, I'm sorry, of Harvard. Thank you, Avah. And then also, executive director of our chamber. We have to make some comments.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you very much. I'm here in support of this resolution as well. When I first came to Los Angeles as a very young man, I thought there were at least two things that I knew. One, I thought I knew something about hard work, having grown up in the Central Valley, picking cotton and cutting grapes. And secondly, I thought I knew something about local government. And then, I quickly found out, working for Tom Bradley, that I knew nothing about either. He was one of the hardest-working individuals I have ever seen in my life. And on the issue of local government, and being able to get things done in government, he was a master. He was a founder, a member, founder of the Association of Governments in Southern California. He became president of the National League of Cities, president of the U.S. Conference of Mayor, and many other organizations. He was known domestically and internationally. During my tenure at the port, I had numerous occasions and opportunities to see the mayor in action, bringing trade and developing economic commerce, and for this region and for this city in particular. He was a very hard-working and effective member. I urge your support of this resolution. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Birds. Let me ask Mr. Wonderburg, executive assistant for the mayor, to come up and make some comments.
To the honorable councilmen, Parks, I thank you very much for the opportunity to be here to this honorable body of council members, representing the city of Los Angeles. As an employee of the city of Los Angeles, coming into this chamber brings very warm memories. Having had an opportunity and a privilege, working for Tom Bradley for some 22 years, for the last 22 years, and for the entire 20 years as the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, up close and personal, having an opportunity to know that Tom Bradley truly loved this city and its people, and that he gave his all to this city, for it to be a better city for all people. I commend the council for the stamp, and making the effort that the legacy is remembered. Tom Bradley, the man, and the legacy is very, very important, that the people of tomorrow will know who he was in the past years. I thank you for the opportunity to say hello as a public speaker. You never should put "speaker" before a microphone. But thank you very much, and I do support your efforts. Thank you.
And then, a member of the mayor's outreach for commission, is Mr. Dominic Gubacava, and ask him to come up and make some comments.
Covenant, please, could you make some comments, please?
Good morning. It's nice to see all these familiar faces. I'd like to say something about Tom Bradley that I think is a matter of historical record, but that maybe some of us in this room don't remember as clearly as we should. In the '50s, in the '60s, and in the early '70s, this chamber and city government was quite different than it is today. The faces that we see in here today, we wouldn't have seen in that era. And a lot of things that we take for granted today, the role of diversity, the expansive nature of representation that we have today, that we take for granted, was not part of the city charter. It was not part of the way the government operated. Tom Bradley changed all of that. When I heard our esteemed colleague from the post office talk about generally, this is reserved for someone with national impact and significance, I immediately thought of the impact that Tom Bradley had on government, and the way we looked at government, the inclusiveness of government. The opportunity that he provided for young people, for women, for minorities. This is Black History Week and month, excuse me, and we must, of course, recognize that. But anyone who would limit that definition, Tom was missing the boat. Tom created opportunities for everyone within the city of Los Angeles. He reached out to young people, he reached out to women, he reached out to Latinos. I remember, as a young man, my professional years, when the commissions were very, very different than they are today. Many things that we take for granted, and some of the rules that are now in the city charter, came from the acts and actions of Tom Bradley. And whether you're here, or you're in Milwaukee, or St. Louis, or Boston, I guarantee you that the hand of Tom Bradley has been felt in every one of those places, and I strongly urge your support for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dominic. Ask Pastor Marie to come up.
Pastor Marie, could you come in, please?
Thank you, precious commission. Bishop Blake will represent all of us in the religious community, who thank you for understanding that the credentials of Tom Bradley are one aspect. A similar aspect is the imaging that will be translated and transmuted to us all. But there is so much negative imaging in the drug culture, the gun culture, the DVDs that denigrate people. So he will stand as a positive image if you will move us to the next step. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we're going to have batting cleanup as he did at the news conference. Bishop Blake, come up and make some comments.
Thank you so much, Councilman Parks, president of the council, and members of the city council. Someone passed to me a brief writing by a former press secretary of the late Tom Bradley, Mr. Bob Collis. I don't think I can say it any better than he said it. Mr. Collis says that as the press secretary, I watched in amazement as Tom Bradley directed every aspect of a city and budget, which he knew like the back of his hand. At the age of seven, while picking cotton in Texas, with his hands bleeding, Bradley remembers thinking about wanting a better life. His grandfather was a slave. Tom Bradley went to college. This after his high school counselor said, "People like you don't go to college." He became an LAPD cop and rose to the rank of lieutenant before the black and white police cars were integrated. He went to law school at night, became a lawyer, went on to win a seat on the 10th council district, which had a majority of white voters. He never used a race car. In fact, I never heard him privately ever talking about race. That was what other people who were ignorant talked about. Bradley was just interested in running the city. When he won the mayor's contest in 1973, he turned around in the hotel room where we were watching the returns on election night, gave me a big bear hug, and then, in self-marking humor, "I is the mayor." Bradley, in a majority-white-voting city, won every single area of Los Angeles: Latino, Caucasian, Asian, African-American, Irish, Jewish, and every other little section of the city. He wasn't perfect, and neither were the people who voted for him. But he overcame every obstacle put in his way to be successful in a society which said he wasn't supposed to succeed. This postage stamp is to the credit of all the people of Los Angeles, who put their own petty issues of race aside, and voted for someone who was more effective in running the city of Los Angeles than others. He was very moderate in his politics, lifestyle. He just knew he could run this complicated city. He led us well, and it would be just significant, wonderful, and tremendous if this council were to pass a resolution that could be carried to the committee, the post office of our nation, that would set aside a commemorative stamp for Mr. Tom Bradley. It would honor him, it would honor our city, it would honor all of us. And so, all of the citizens who've come this morning have come to say to this council, vote in favor of this resolution. And let's add another mark for history for Mr. Tom Bradley. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bishop Blake. Thank you. Let me just comment on a couple of things from the original motion. Not that we would not remember them, but I think it's important for the general public to realize that what Mayor Tom Bradley's history and legacy is, that when we think about 20 years as mayor of a major city, that will never be accomplished in the city of L.A., again, particularly with term limits. That we also know that when he was elected in 1973, he paved the way for many other leaders. It was the first time in the history that a black mayor of a major city, also, most people do not comment on, but he ran a city for 20 years in which he never had a majority electorate that was minority. He also joined the police department in 1940, remained there until 1961. Many people aren't aware that the main reason that he left the LAPD is that there was an unwritten rule at that time that you could not make the rank of captain and be black. And so, that's why Tom Bradley left the Los Angeles Police Department. He later became an attorney, 10 years as a council member, 20 years as a mayor. So we'd have to think there's a little inkling he could have been a captain on the LAPD had he stayed. So that was something that was not known. It wasn't until '61 that, when he left, that actually, black and white officers worked in the same police car. So that's another unknown fact, that it wasn't in Mississippi, Arkansas, right here in Los Angeles. And I tell people that I remember the very day that I saw the first black and white police officers in the same police car in 1961, graduated from high school at the corner of Adams and West Street. It was such a remarkable incident, I went home and told my parents, "Guess what I just saw going northbound on Adams and West Street? It's a black and white police officer in the same car." And that's something that always will be cornerstone in my memory as to the transition that the city and why Tom Bradley did not stay on. But after 21, he didn't do poorly after he left, but he certainly probably would have stayed on. But after 21 years, as I said, he was the, 10 years as a council member, became the 37th mayor, the thing I think he's known most for is he absolutely opened the doors of City Hall. Opened the doors of the city in City Hall to where, in many instances, for the first time, minority and women were given their first opportunities to have an impact on city government. He also created a number of things, particularly in the 8th district, that I am a beneficiary of, is that he was the one that helped revitalize Baldwin Hills Shopping Center. He created the Vermont Slauson Shopping Center and the financial support for it. He also should be remembered for the fact that we have a metro blue line, a red line underground system that begins to tie the city's transportation needs. He was the president of the National League of Cities in '74. He also should be remembered because of the '84 Olympics, in which he brought a very successful game. In fact, it's been modeled, each four-year segment, they modeled each country on how to go forward on an Olympics and not go into debt on the format of the city of Los Angeles. The games in California boosted the economy by $3.3 billion and created 68,000 jobs, and ended up with a $215 million surplus, which is still being used by the Amateur Athletic Foundation today. Also, in his exceptional leadership, we think these are just a few of the things that would cause us to vote and move this forward, so that in a year or so, and it's not going to be an easy task, but in a year or so that we'd be able to commemorate, in a day in history of the city of L.A., to be the only place where this stamp would be sold, and that we would give him the proper honor that he deserves. And so, I would ask also that item 19A, is an amended motion, where we're asking the CLA to be a support mechanism in this effort, and so we'd ask that we get an I vote on 19 and 19A.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. We have quite a bit of interest generated on this. Ms. Grue is first, then Ms. Perry, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson, Mr. LeBons, Mr. Reyes, and Ms. Han, starting with Ms. Grue.
Assistant Ms. Perry was the second. I'd like to ask Ms. Perry to go.
Okay. Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Ms. Grue. And, Mr. President, I won't take very long, and I was really honored when Mr. Parks asked me to sign on. And friends, longtime friends, who are assembled here in the chamber today, it touches my heart, these are the people I grew up watching and trying to emulate, in many ways, but at the top of the pinnacle of that was Mayor Bradley. And Mr. Parks has enumerated his accomplishments, and they are extraordinary in their depth and their breadth, but what I remember about him most is how gracious he was, no matter where he was, and I don't know whether I ever said this to you, Lorraine, but I was at work one morning, it was about 7:30, and I was going down to, I think it was Rite Aid or, I don't want to say the chain, but the drugstore downstairs, and your father was coming up the escalator, and he was, of course, in a suit and a tie, looking very elegant, and he was carrying his purchases in two plastic bags. And you should have seen people stop and just gasp, that it was the mayor coming from the drugstore. And he nodded, and he would say hello, but his regal bearing, his character, and yet he was warm, and he was not aloof, said hello along the way. And that always really touched me, that he was never beyond people's grasp, and he was always open and available to people, no matter where he was. And this stamp will serve as an opportunity to teach kids about their own history, the history of our country and our city, and that you're here, and all of you, and the lives that he touched, the careers that he spawned, it's living history for us to be able to share. So I'm appreciative of this, and the stamp will serve as the vehicle to do that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grue.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry for setting this in motion. As I was sitting here and talking about that Tom Bradley had a lot of impact on people and giving them opportunities, I literally would not be standing here as a council member if it wasn't for Tom Bradley. And many of you in that row, who helped me along the way, because I interned for him when I was 17 years old, and then went on to work for him for 10 years. And it was an incredible experience for me throughout those years, learning, as Ms. Perry talked about, you know, he was one, at that time, they didn't have drivers, they didn't have security, he drove himself, and even when they wanted to have security, he wanted to drive himself wherever he went. And I know that sometimes his detail would be very upset that he got in the car and driven somewhere all by himself. We'd hear about it the next day. But when they talked about all the things from the Olympics to the Tom Bradley International Airport, to L.A.'s Best, which has become that national model, where he didn't take no from the school district, when they did not want to start that program at the schools, when he worked on the subway, which a lot of people said could not be done, and if it had more support, we probably would have it all over the city of Los Angeles, but he worked very hard to make that possible. And Jan mentions how the impact, you know, there are untold young people who saw him, were touched by him, not only was he tall in stature, and if you ever shook his hand, I mean, he would take your hand, you know, I mean, you're... your hand, you know, I mean, my hand would just be small, and that big hand, but it, I think, was emblematic of what he did throughout, not only the city, but internationally. And I know, I did not travel with him internationally, but I did across this country. No matter where you were, in what hotel, what restaurant, people knew Tom Bradley because of his commitment to people, young, old, poor, whatever it was, he stood up for them and was a strong voice. And I always remember this one story on the homeless issue, when we were down on Christmas Eve downtown, where now the Union Rescue Mission's new location stands. And it was a vacant lot, and they were feeding the homeless that day. And Allie Webb, I remember she and I were chatting, and there was Tom Bradley talking to somebody in the corner. And all of a sudden, this gentleman, this homeless individual, got in his car with him, with LAPD. They did have LAPD there. And I said to, you know, someone, "Who was that guy?" And he said, "That was someone who said his family was living in a car and didn't want to spend Christmas Eve in a car with his family. And Tom Bradley was going to pick up the family and take them to a hotel, that they would have a few nights, that they would be in a hotel." The kind of odd part of that story is, the guy was really pulling his leg, and they drove around for a half hour, and his family wasn't really living in the car, but it was the mayor's idea that he was going to take care of that family and that individual. And that, I think, again, is emblematic of who he was. This stamp would forever be a reminder for those of us who were touched by him, but even more importantly, for people like my son, who did not have the pleasure of meeting him, but will grow up knowing that this was someone in this city who crossed all racial lines, all ethnic lines, and stood up for what a great city we have in the city of Los Angeles. So it's really my pleasure and honor to stand here, to embrace giving him a stamp. And one last story is, you know, after Tom Bradley had his stroke, that did not stop him. And we knew, you know, later in life, he was a man of few words. It was that look, it was the shoulder laugh, whatever it was, we knew what he was thinking, what message he wanted to get to you, and we would go to lunch after the stroke. And when my father passed away, and he had only been out of hospital, I think, a month or so, and Aunt Tonka Lea, and he came to my father's funeral, which really touched me, that he took the time, and again, was very weak, but was there. And that's what he did every single day when he was mayor, to visit people when they were in need. And so we're here standing up today for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grue. Mr. Rosendahl's our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom Bradley was a gentle giant, big, tall man. I got to know him since 1981. The first African American elected of a big city was Carl Stokes in '67, and then Tom Bradley came after him. But he was a healer, he was a coalition builder. He was a person that brought people together, and he very calmly chaired the meetings. Came to me, actually, when I decided to do this television show business in 1987. He was my very first guest, December 28, 1987. I'll never forget it. He looked into the camera, and he said, "I hope this will be the beginning of a major da-da-da-da." Lo and behold, 16 years, 3,000 shows later, we can thank Tom Bradley, I can, for the energy he gave me on that very first show, and showed to me that television can be an empowering, connecting mechanism. A gentle giant, sat right here in the horseshoe, from a police officer to a council member to a mayor. We're all blessed to have had him as our mayor, and of course, a stamp would be absolutely perfect. I can't wait to get them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Wesson is next.
Thank you, Mr. President and members, to probably Wendy, Tom LeBons, and Greg Smith. When we walked into council today, it was almost like we got into a time machine, and we went back to see these friendly faces. And to see you, Lorraine, was just a wonderful treat for me. Now, in some respects, I wish I could stay back in that, because I was a little younger then. But I want to commend Mr. Parks. Bernard, you always do things like this. You're always sensitive, and it's a pleasure to serve with you, and I truly appreciate you affording me the opportunity to second this resolution. Now, there was talk that in order to get a stamp for someone, they have to be a national figure. Well, I submit to you without a doubt that this man, this great mayor, was a national figure. I've been blessed in my life. I was born and raised in Cleveland, Ohio, so I had the opportunity to see Mayor Stokes elected. And then shortly thereafter, I moved to this great city where I had an opportunity to meet the mayor. He was partly a symbol, a symbol that showed to individuals throughout this country that anything was possible. But more than that, he probably was the most effective big-city mayor in the history of this country. And seeing you today reminds me of what I call his theme song. Whenever he would get elected, he would play somewhere, "Dream the impossible dream." And that's his legacy to people. For me, to stand here today is an impossible dream, something that I wouldn't have believed would have occurred, so I'm proud to do that. And when the mayor, I do have a couple of quick little stories, real quick. When the mayor was driving, remember Louis, he used to drive him all the time, Trillo? When I became Speaker of the House, I hired Louis to be my driver. And I wonder if he drove, your dad is crazy as he drove me, he would make all these sounds and noises when he drove. I also can remember one day, I can't remember the issue, but the press, they were peppering the mayor and talking about, "Mayor, you're in this big fight," or, "Are you concerned?" And Mayor Bradley turned and looked and said, "If you see me in a fight with a bear, help the bear." The other time, real quickly, I was in the elevator with him and my former boss, Nate Holden, and people to know that the mayor really had a great sense of humor. And so Nate looks at him and says, "Mr. Mayor, you have this beautiful, black, shiny hair." The mayor turned around and he looked at Nate, and he said, "And for $13.99, you can have it too." And the last thing, and probably what makes him so personal to me, Mayor Bradley would never say to Wanda or anybody else, "Get Councilman so-and-so on the phone." He would call himself. I never forget one day answering the phone, and he was looking for Councilman Holden. I'll never forget him calling to speak to Supervisor Yvonne, but he would get on the phone. He was a special man. This is the least that we can do. It's good to see all of you, and again, I want to commend Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Mr. LeBons.
This is a very good morning here that we're all together, and thanks to United States Postal Service and the Postmaster. It's good to have you here, and this great alumni of dedicated public servants who are here and family to salute a man who served this city. Herb, I love what you were talking about then, and I think, I hope our staffs now listen to it, because it was a greatness when Tom Bradley ran City Hall. And what a kind man, and the conversations, and you say the direct phone calls. I remember one time, Wanda, he called Pat Mount, John Farrar's office. Pat Mount thought it was me playing a trick. Two minutes later, I walk into her office, he says, "Tom, is that you on the phone?" No. It was Mayor Bradley holding for Pat Mount, the late great Chief Deputy, all the time when on the elevator. I got a bad letter once from a woman who said I did something wrong, and they sent it to the mayor of Los Angeles. He read it, he wanted to know all about it. Well, I told him the true story, he laughed about it. I wasn't bad, but it was something that was interesting. But he read all that mail that came, and he kept them. And once, a woman had a broken-down car at the observatory. I still think of the spot. He was up at the observatory with there with John, and he stopped, got cables out of the car, helped the woman, helped the woman get her car junked down there. And this is a very remarkable man. All those things, and Mr. Parks, I thank you for doing this, and others who joined in this, is about a human being who was so fortunate to come to Los Angeles for us in this city. And I remember I was chatting with Janice on, minutes ago, where she told me to be quiet, because there were so many wonderful things being stated about a man, how it was the first election that I really got into as a young person. And then I was on Mayor Tom Bradley's youth council when I was a youth, and it created many opportunities for others, which is so good. And what's so important about the United States Postal Service is that stamp, somebody who we don't know will see that, hopefully, as it gets done, and say, "Who was Tom Bradley?" And they'll find out he was a man who came from Texas, is a young boy, raised in Los Angeles, went to UCLA, was a great track man, and then got into public service. And as one door closes, as it did in the police department, he came over, opened all these doors here in City Council. And I know the importance of this city, and the greatest time that our city lived through was the '84 Games, and the work that collectively they did. And I'm pleased with the late, great John Farrar on Tom Bradley, and I was once with him internationally, and it's amazing to see. And when those two men were in China, when China was first, I don't know if you were there, Easy, on the first trip, John and Tom Bradley, both tall, Tom 6'5", John 6'4", it was amazing for the Chinese to see the Americans who had come, Tom Bradley leading the way. This is a wonderful effort we should get behind, and also encourage the education of who great leaders it are, and especially this, the African American History Month. I thank you, and thank the United States Postal Services for everything they send me, except all those bills, but that's another story.
Thank you, Ed Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to rise and thank our Mr. Sentative Bernard Parks for bringing this forward. This is the second time on the floor of your label as such. We're going to have to wonder about that, but I do want to thank you. And when we talk about history, we talk about impact. I just want to join the chorus here. And we should elevate the stature of Mayor Bradley at a national level, and we just look at the state of our society today. We talk about all the funding we spend in prisons. And we look at who is filling up our prisons. The disproportionate number of youngsters that are of color, and the issue of self-esteem, the issue of history is so profound. And to see a stamp, when Mayor Bradley, I think, would send a message over and over and over again of what we could be as Americans here in this great country. And that is what Mayor Bradley represents to me. As a senior in high school at Cathedral, I was part of the Youth Advisory Council. I'll never forget walking up those steps to the tower. As I'm walking up, there's Mayor Bradley standing over everyone, and I'm just blown away. Not only that, the first time ever in my life on the City Hall, I have my parents with me, who don't speak English, and taxpayers all their life, living here. First time there in City Hall, and he welcomed us. He made us feel like it was part of our existence. He was inclusive, and he created that type of energy, I think, for the whole city, if not the region. You know, this past Sunday, and I'll speak to this morning announcements, I had the pleasure of learning of an individual called Mary Allen Pleasant, the first African American millionaire, the turn of the century, who used her resources, her know-how, to bring those individuals who wanted to get out of slavery on the underground railroad. She bought land, she organized businesses, she created various places for them to live. And we're learning about her because of this great one. We celebrate African American history. Imagine if she was a stamp. But for me, Mayor Bradley is one of the individuals that deserves that stature. We should give it to him, and I just want to stand with my colleagues in praising his accomplishments and celebrating his history for the sake of our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn is our next speaker.
Thank you. What a great idea, what a great idea, whose time has come. And so appropriate that we're doing this at the start of Black History Month. Thank you, Councilmember Parks, and Perry, and Grue, and Wesson for bringing this forward. Tom Bradley, really, I believe, will go down in history as the greatest mayor that the city of Los Angeles has ever had. And I can say that because I actually have one of those mayors in my own family. But I really think, and a lot of it, I think, had to do with the fact that he was mayor for 20 years. And now we have term limits, and it's hard to have that kind of incredible impact and legacy in a shorter time. And he was such an international figure. And I think that's why this stamp is appropriate. He really made Los Angeles an international city. And he brought the dignity, the grandeur, we talked about him almost having that royal feeling. And that's the way Tom Bradley was, whether it was when he was presiding over something or when he was walking into these chambers or meeting someone on the street. Tom Bradley really, really, I think, put Los Angeles on the map. It was the first mayor election that I ever voted in, in 1973. And I do remember voting for Mayor Bradley. And he and my dad, of course, were dear, dear friends for many, many, many years. We all have stories. And I also remember picking up the phone when I was an investment banker, and picking up the phone, because I had placed a call to him, and he called back personally. And it's always was such a shock to pick up the phone and have him on the other end. I also really think, a lot of people don't realize how much influence he had on bringing shopping centers to Los Angeles. You know, he and Mr. Alexander Hager worked together on the Vermont Slauson project, and also, of course, bringing the first regional urban mall to Los Angeles, which was the Baldwin Hill, Crenshaw Plaza. And that came with a lot of controversy, and a lot of feeling that that part of the city didn't deserve a regional urban mall. And yet Tom put his name behind it, his political influence behind it, and that certainly has been a successful venture as a result of that. I have one story that I will remember. It was when Prince Andrew and Princess Fergie made their first official visit to Los Angeles, and they were here in the council chambers. My brother was the city attorney, I believe, at the time, and did not see fit to give me a VIP ticket to be a part of the festivities, because I was just his little sister when I wasn't in the political life at that point. So I was relegated to the back with the bleachers, with everyone, and I was so jealous, sitting there, watching my brother and everyone getting to meet them and shake their hands and spend time with them. And Mayor Bradley began to walk out to the exit, take them out of his chambers, and they were on a very short timeframe, they were rushed, and there was a huge crowd in the council chambers that morning. And when he got all the way to the back at the bleachers, he spotted me, and he stopped the whole entourage. And he said, you know, "Prince and Princess," I could hear him say, "You've met the city attorney. Well, I'd like for you to meet his sister, Janice." And he stopped the whole entourage so that they could shake my hands. And I kind of shot my brother a dirty look during that. But that was the kind of man he was. I mean, he just, he spotted people, he knew that it meant a lot to me for him to do that, and so he took the time to do that. He's a great man. This stamp would be the perfect thing to do to honor him, to honor his family, and to give Los Angeles, again, the honor of being associated with one of the greatest years we've ever had. So, great idea.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Zain is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning to everyone, those friendly faces out there. Easy, I remember you down in the port before it's grown to where it is today. I met Tom Bradley one time. I'll never forget the situation. It was the '84 Olympics, and we had something at Barnstable Park, and I was a motorcycle sergeant at that time. And he came up there. I never knew how tall this man was. I'm 6'1", and he towered over me, and we spoke with him, we exchanged greetings, handshakes, took some pictures. In fact, I still have the pictures in uniform with the mayor of the city of Los Angeles. And it was amazing relationship that, a few minutes, he was there with us at the park, at Barnstable Park. And we were there for some kind of security during the '84 Olympics. I don't recall exactly what we were there doing, but something was associated with that. And he stopped by. And it was really one of those opportunities in a lifetime to meet a man, because when you're a police officer, you often don't see the politicians, you don't get to be with them. So we enjoyed that experience. And I always reflect back, he was the first police officer to come to City Council. I'm the second police officer to come to City Council, and my colleague Bernard Parks is the third to come to City Council. And I'm of Lebanese, parents. So he laid the pathway for the African Americans. And Middle Easterns are not very involved in politics in the state of California. I try to break people into focus, to have diversity, to show we can all be a part of it and work together for the benefit of the people of this wonderful city, this wonderful country. So I support this. I think it's a wonderful tribute to the Bradley family and to the legacy of Tom Bradley, all he's done for the people of Los Angeles. And if you look at the downtown, where we had an area that was decayed, he built that area. I think it was called Bunker Hill at the time, where he renovated that and made it beautiful as it is today, and it's continued. But we didn't have skyscrapers, we now do. So it's with that legacy that I'm very honored. So it's with that legacy that I'm very honored to support this and to the Postal Service. I want the Postal Service on other occasions when they've unveiled other commemorative stamps. And it's an honor to our former mayor, former police officer, a man who gave so much of his life and his family who still lives on representing human relations and other aspects of the city of Los Angeles. So thank you for being here, strong supporter of this. And I know it's going to pass unanimously, and we'll continue on with that. But all of you, you should come by more often because we like those friendly faces that we seldom see. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. I think this is an appropriate way in which we need to continue the dialogue about who Tom Bradley is. Because Tom Bradley lives today in the work that he's done, the things that he's set forth, that we're still trying to work on and do our best to make sure that we're doing what we can for the city of Los Angeles. And as it was said earlier, whenever a child looks at this stamp and says, "Who's Tom Bradley?", it gives us older people, as we get older, to pass those stories on to the next generation and the next and the next so that they understand who Tom Bradley is and so that they can appreciate all the obstacles and the barriers and all the things that he overcame. But he overcame them with class. He overcame them with the kind of personality that I wish all of our children could exude and learn. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to make sure that his legacy lives on, not only in the room upstairs that we've named after him and the many different places throughout the city, but a stamp is something that will travel the world, it's something that will travel the community. And every person that gets to ask that question will just exude who Tom Bradley is whenever they run across somebody who says, "I knew Tom Bradley, and Tom Bradley was a great man, and I'm glad that you asked that question." So thank you very much, Mr. Parks, Mr. Sensitive Parks, for this opportunity to pass this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Parks followed by Mr. Labanche. Mr. Labanche followed by Mr. Parks.
I forgot to mention the great Protocol Office and the work of the Sister City Program and B. Lavery and all that. And also, members, just think, if his dream for the subway system and all the regional transit system was built out, we wouldn't be in the mess we're in today. I wanted to get that in, especially the Protocol and B. Lavery. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask Jackie DePonte Walker, she was going to be here earlier, and we were pleased that she was able to find time. Our executive director, Ward Church Foundation, runs one of our fantastic senior facilities, but she also would like to make a comment on this stamp.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Good morning, and my apologies to the council for being late. It is so important to be here, and much of what I heard about Mayor Tom Bradley, I absolutely say amen, amen, amen. As a social action officer for the International Amy Church, we pledge to support this move. We know that it can be an uphill battle, but we believe in miracles. We know this is a worthy venture. My memory of Tom Bradley was not only when he came out to the opening of Wardvillas some 15 years ago, but the kind of Tom Bradley who, even if staff said to him, "This is not an event that should be on your schedule," he went home to the Getty Mansion, got in his car, and drove to your event. And so we in this community understand that is the kind of servanthood that needs to be memorialized. And we support the issuance of the stamp. Thank you, Mr. Parks, for taking the forward move.
There's something to thank everybody for being here. It was like old home week with Wanda and Ezzy. It took me five years to understand how to spell Ezzy's name, but...
And Mr. Parks, Mr. Garcetti wants to speak. Do you want to have him speak before you conclude? Okay, Mr. Garcetti.
I want to thank you, Mr. Parks, for this and the secondedays of those motions. This has been one of those beautiful moments in Los Angeles history. And we so often forget that we are a city with such a rich and beautiful history, with such notable and important people, not just locally but nationally and internationally. And in the era of term limits, we kind of, we mourn the ability of whether or not we can have another Tom Bradley. We mourn whether or not we will have the stability in our city, whether we will have leaders that can look at the long term. We've been able to extend that a little bit in city council, but as we look at what greatness is about and how we bring a great city to be, we need to remember that Tom Bradley was given the time to grow and to become a leader and to emerge not just here as a local leader but as an international leader. My advisors have advised me to stop telling the story, but I will tell one quick Tom Bradley story. I'm too young, of course, to have too many direct experiences with Tom Bradley, though I did meet him. But my grandfather, who was an immigrant from Mexico, grew up in Boyle Heights, and I remember watching television as a young boy and seeing Mayor Bradley on television. And my grandfather pointed to him and said, "Oh, I know him." And as a young boy, I said, "Oh, how do you know him, Grandpa?" He said, "Well, let's just say I had a run-in or two with him when he was an officer with the Los Angeles Police Department." Now, I want to thank the Bradley family because my grandfather, who never finished junior high school, ran with some folks in Boyle Heights, whose names are Kohn and Siegel and things like that. He turned his life around. And maybe it was that interaction with a young LAPD officer that helped him realize that there was something more important to his life that he could do. When he fought World War II, came back, became a citizen, and turned his life around and became a barber for the rest of his life and opened up a small shop near USC eventually. And Tom Bradley touched our family quite directly in a way that influenced us and in some ways laid the groundwork for me to be here today. He is a man who has touched so much of Los Angeles and so much of the world. So I want to thank Mr. Parks, and I look forward to the day that we see that framed right there of Tom Bradley, the greatest mayor we've ever had. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to again thank those who showed up today and actually allowed us to relive a little of that history from the mayor's office. Also, I want to thank Mr. Smith from the Postal Service and Mr. Dozer also for giving us those guidelines. And Lorraine Bradley, I want to say thank her for being here, carrying on the family's work. We are just so pleased that she's able to be a part of this. And with so many stories given today, and it kind of reminds you of some of your contacts, whatever Mayor Bradley called you personally, and that was always a shock to most of us. But one of the things that's always impressed me with him is that no matter how many speeches he gave, he never referred to a note. He always was able to speak extemporaneously, was right on cue. And I think Ezzy told me this story about once at the Bonaventure, he even walked in the wrong room and gave a speech, and they had to corral him and bring him to another room so he can give the right speech. So he was very unique in that regard. And as I always have looked at him, and I've mentioned this at his funeral, had there not been a Tom Bradley, there would not have been a Bernard Parks. As a police officer, as a chief of police, now a city councilman, so I'll always be eternally grateful to him as a role model, as a person that has done so many things for this city that we could not even conceive of. And so he's left so many legacies. Many of us go through life hoping to leave a legacy. He's left so many of them that we hope that each and every one of those gets recounted. So as we go through this process that we're able to dissect his life, get each one of those segments of his life to present their proclamation so that no one will ever go through the city of L.A. or anywhere else to say who was Tom Bradley. And that's what our mission is here today. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks, and all the comments today. Madam Clerk, if we could open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the votes. Thirteen ayes? That's been approved. Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here today. Love of the day. The roll has to go forthwith. Forthwith. Yes, Mr. Wesson.
If I could just kind of cut the line real quick, I want to present to the council and all those that are watching us on television, members of the Ebony Repertory Theater. And two of the leaders of this movement, if you guys could get a little closer, is a constituent from my district, Ren Brown, who he does a lot of voiceover work. Trust me, you've heard this man's voice before. And a man that needs no introduction, introduction at all, is the talented, great actor Lawrence Fishburne. Could we give them a round of applause? One of the perks about being in Hollywood is you have an opportunity to meet all of these phenomenal people that spend a lot of their work entertaining us and taking us to places that under normal circumstances, we wouldn't have an opportunity to go. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Rosendahl.
When we talk about regionalism with our airlines, we really do mean not all in one place, LAX. LAX expansion is over. Regionalism is the case. Some of you might have seen on television last night, the mayor directing a plane into Ontario Airport. I'm going to ask Jim Ream to come over to me right here, and also the other executives from Express Jet Airlines. And Madam President, Express Jet Airlines is going to do 29 non-stop direct flights out of Ontario beginning in the spring. This will be a 63% increase of direct flights from Ontario to 14 different locations. It will actually mean an increase of 25% of the capacity at Ontario. So talkish, cheap, action speed. This airline is doing what we've been dreaming of everybody doing, and that is have non-stop direct frequent and discounted flights out of Ontario, not just LAX. Express Jet Airlines and Jim Ream, Jim, if you could just come over into the mic and say a word or two to my colleagues and to the great city.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Other state members of the Los Angeles City Council. On behalf of the 8,000 employees of Express Jet, we're so honored to be acknowledged here today by the city council. We look forward to being a part of the Los Angeles and Ontario communities. Express Jet's been providing scheduled service for over 20 years throughout the United States. Last year, we transported 18 million passengers to over 152 destinations. This is the first opportunity where we've had aircraft free to provide more direct service from underutilized communities like the Los Angeles-Ontario Airport to other communities throughout the United States that heretofore have usually had to have connecting service. So all our employees are so excited about providing this service. We'll be starting the 1st of April. We're happy to be a part of the community, and we very much appreciate the support by all the political officials involved and by the Los Angeles World Airport Authority. They've been very professional and are very much a driving force behind this initiative. So thank you once again.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item?
Next item, Madam President. Item number seven is confirmation of Mr. Michael Fleming to the Board of L.A. Convention Center Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. If you could join us at the table, and I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti.
I'll defer to our chairwoman first since it came through. You sure? Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Madam President. And I know that unanimous vote, I'm sure, came out of our TCT committee, but I wanted to speak Mr. Fleming's character, somebody who has served very well, I know, from Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weisar and myself. The East Area Planning Commission was our chair for quite a few years and also a great member, and somebody who's been a great activist as well in the Los Angeles community through his work with the Bennett Foundation and making sure that, whether it's transportation and mobility, which is an area that I know is of particular keen interest to Mr. Fleming, but also in looking at health care and other access for LGBT youth to education and libraries. There's been a number of things that you have done that have already made an impact. But tell us a little something about why you're interested in promoting L.A. and what you think we can be doing better than we are today.
I don't, thank you, Mr. President. I don't think it's tough to promote L.A. It's pretty easy. It's the best place to live, it's the most dynamic city. When the mayor mentioned the opportunity to serve on the Board of the Convention Center, it's kind of a no-brainer. And my hope is that I can, as the Convention Center team kind of tries to ramp it up and be a little more of a business model, to be a little more aggressive going after industries and organizations, that I'll be able to offer some support as a board member.
And it will be an extraordinary time, obviously, with everything going on around the Convention Center. Ms. Perry's efforts to continue to develop the South Park area around Staples, hopefully it'll be more of a destination where people can stay. What sort of things would you like to see in that neighborhood to support the Convention Center, and what can we be doing as a council to help you in selling the Convention Center as a great destination to come to for not just a day or two, but hopefully a longer stay in Los Angeles?
Well, I think the development of L.A. Live really is going to go an awful long way to getting folks to seeing the Convention Center, not as an add-on, not as something that's a forgotten stepchild, but an integral part of bringing tourism and business to the city. The development of those hotels, of the Nokia Theater. You know, it's the biggest issue that folks talk about when the Convention Center is pitched around the country is, well, how close are the hotels? Where are people going to go at night? It's not that far away from city hall, and yet people have this perception, it's much further right. Having world-class hotels and entertainment venues literally next door and tied together in a seamless manner, I think will drive the business there. I think the business wants to be there.
Great. Well, I want to thank you for putting yourself forward again. You're a glutton for punishment, but we appreciate your incredible expertise in a range of areas, that you're willing to volunteer your time for the citizens of Los Angeles, and I wholeheartedly support. I give you a hard time sometimes, but you do do a good pledge of allegiance here, which I know you've done before. But I ask all my colleagues to support Mr. Fleming today in this next part of his leadership. Thank you. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. And our thanks to you for agreeing to serve on this. You have an amazing resume, particularly your incredible experience in the media. And I thought maybe you could talk a little bit about how you think we could do a better job of marketing the Convention Center. What are you going to bring with your background to kind of help us market it better? Are we using the media as much as we could? Why don't you speak to that?
It's a great question. And in speaking to the staff at the Convention Center, my sense was that they were, not befuddled, but amazed by the fact that it doesn't get mentioned more often. And I think we all, elected and appointed alike, need to do a much better job of recognizing the importance of the Convention Center, that it doesn't really have a peer out there, that it's much larger than just providing a convention hall to a city. It really could provide access to lots of new businesses and enterprises coming into the city. And so I think we all need to put it at the top of the list of things that we promote when we're promoting Los Angeles. It's fine to promote theme parks and the beaches, but in addition, we also need to be promoting vehicles like the Convention Center that actually do bring business and revenues into the city.
I don't know if you've heard us discussing it, but I know Councilmember Rosendahl and myself, and we've now got a little more momentum to the idea of possibly helping to build and finance a mini-conference center over at LAX, which we think would attract some of the smaller conventions and conferences, which right now I believe we're losing to Long Beach, Burbank, Glendale. What's your thoughts on that? And is that a good thing for us? And how should we go about doing that?
I think it's absolutely a great thing. And if I think if we look at it as an incubator, if we look at it as a way to attract small businesses for whom the Convention Center right now is just too big. Also, given where it's located, I mean, we know that lots of folks coming into town for business don't venture much further than kind of the LAX quarter. So it makes great sense to place it there. And also, there's the revenue side, that those folks come into town, they stay in hotels, they generate this TOT tax, which actually ends up going to benefit the Convention Center at the end of the day. So the rising tide is going to lift all the boats here.
Perfect answer. Well, we, I would encourage you and the other commissioners to really, let's see you guys agendize this or in some way really make that a serious consideration this year, that the commissioners could really take a look at and figure out how we make this happen. Because I think it makes a lot of sense, and we would love to have all of you, among all the other things, focusing on that as a way to lift all boats.
Absolutely. Have my support.
And congratulations. I'm happy to support your appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. I love the line you said, because that's the line I've been using, "All boats rise together." And that's what we've been saying since day one about the living wage in context of Century Boulevard. The Convention Center is going into the black. It's actually starting to turn the corner. Tell me what you feel you'll bring to this mix on that commission that we obviously need.
You know, my sense, Councilmember, is that the folks on the commission and the newer folks are really hoping to bring more of a business model, so to be a little more aggressive about bringing in new business and new industry, and not just sitting back and expecting that folks will just want to use the Convention Center because it happens to be located in Los Angeles. And I think as part of a commission, the idea is to really encourage the staff to be aggressive, to think outside the box, and to bring new enterprises into the city. And if that's all I do on this commission, then I think it'll be a success.
I appreciate that. And the Conference Center, just like the airlines that I introduced earlier that are really walking the walk with us in Ontario, do you have any sense of how we could go forward with the Conference Center near LAX or it becomes a destination point?
You know, my suspicion is that folks would line up for it. I mean, we already know that when people come into town and they're doing meetings, they often don't come into the city. They congregate in ballrooms or, you know, hotel facilities that are out by LAX. For us to provide a world-class facility for smaller businesses to meet in an area where they're already coming into, that's already easy to get in by air traffic, it's, again, it seems like a no-brainer. And I think it'll sell itself. Again, like the Convention Center, we're going to have to do a really good... Again, like the Convention Center, we're going to have to do a really good job of talking it out, but I think it'll be greatly successful.
Yeah, and I think with your leadership, it'll be tremendously helpful. Explain the David Bonnet Foundation that your executive director, what is this foundation?
Sure. The David Bonnet Foundation is here in Los Angeles. It was established in nineteen ninety-eight by David Bonnet, who had a business called GeoCities. We have an endowment of a little over thirty million dollars, and we make grants in a number of areas, including gay and lesbian social services, as Council President Garcetti referenced, some non-fossil fuel transit programs, and anti-gun violence, among others.
Also, thank you for your leadership on the AIDS epidemic, and your foundation has played a role in educating, informing, and connecting people to this dreaded disease. Thank you for that.
Sure.
It'd be a great honor to have him confirmed as Commissioner, Madam President. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and I know you've been grilled by my colleagues earlier, so I will not do that. But, Michael, thank you for your role as your planning commissioner previously for the APC as well as your interest in this, and we had a chance to briefly discuss your new challenge of being in this commission and look forward to your insight. One of the issues that I'd like to see as you move forward is the interconnection between our transportation systems and tourism. You know, there's a lot of cities where you arrive and the first thing people do is take a bus. It kind of at least shows them all across the city and where the highlights are, and then they can go back to those at other times. So I'd like us to look and see how we link up our transportation systems with our tourism and particularly with some of those areas that are critical. So I look forward to working with you. And, oh, I was going to say, no more comments, but Mr. LeBonge.
You live in a great neighborhood.
I do.
You have a great image of what this city should be, and I think your experience will only help our Convention Center, so I thank you, and I ask for an eyeball.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonge. So now, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
You've been approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk, if we could take number twenty-six next, please. I think it's based on a card from the public. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
If we could go out to our Valley offices, to Zuma Dog on item number twenty-six. Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you so much, City Council, for that beautiful, spiritual, and inspiring speech on Tom Bradley. Y'all have never looked better. Parks, Blake especially, and everybody, fantastic. I didn't know that stuff, and now his spirit will live on for many, many more years, if not forever. But now let's talk about the special event fees. You knew I was going to come to this. Garcetti, LeBonge, you knew I'd be standing here on this day saying the seventy-ninth Annual Academy Awards presentation, seventy-five thousand dollars. Oh, let me pull out the Jack Weiss memo. It's from January two thousand and two. You haven't fixed this clock, you haven't built the subway to the sea, and you haven't fixed the special event fee waiver abuse. The special event fee waiver is supposed to be for open-to-the-public events in the best interest of the community for nonprofit organizations, y'all. And the Academy Awards, y'all, that is definitely making lots of profit. It's on ABC, it's got Tom Hanks, it's got John Travolta, it's got all these people that are paying dues, and I don't see why the city of Los Angeles should be paying seventy-five thousand dollars to the Academy Awards when you got people that can't get the money, then when the little old ladies go.
If you could not yell, please. If you could not yell. Please continue.
All right, well, I have, okay, well, I have had complaints from constituents, especially in some of the church types of things, that they've contacted their council members, and they say, "Sorry, there ain't no special event fee money." Well, now we know why, y'all, because seventy-five thousand dollars the city of Los Angeles is paying to the Academy Awards for a party where they're making money hand over fist. It's so sad. I feel so sorry for the kids. And then also, we got item number B, y'all, it's the two thousand and seven Nissan Open presented by Countrywide. We're paying sixty-four thousand dollars. Why are we paying sixty-four thousand dollars for Nissan? They're a household name. Their slogan is, their name is Nissan. It's a household name. That means they making money.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zuma Dog. Colleagues, item number twenty-six is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, next item, I know.
Item number nine was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Colleagues, I just wanted to highlight this, and it's another great example of what's happening right in San Pedro and the Harbor area. What we're doing here today is rezoning a two-acre parcel along Harbor Boulevard from light manufacturing to community commercial to allow for a great mixed-use development of residential and commercial. We have Pablo Leon is here, the developer with Pacific Realty Ventures, and I really wanted to highlight this because we are really following a blueprint in San Pedro based on when Urban Land Institute came in two thousand and two and told us, if we wanted to revitalize San Pedro, we needed to embrace the waterfront, embrace the Port of Los Angeles. The community sort of had a hundred-year love-hate relationship with the port. It's been more hate than love, but lately, we've decided to use it to our advantages, to our advantage. One is we're in the process of building a promenade, a walkway that will stretch all the way from the Vincent Thomas Bridge to the Breakwater, where people can come and walk along the waterfront and catch the instant entertainment of the main channel of the Port of Los Angeles with the tugboats and the cruise ships and the cargo container vessels. It's more than just the hub of the international trade industry. It really is an opportunity for people to watch what's going on there. And this development is going to take advantage of the view of the water. San Pedro is sort of the last place with waterfront property that's still available for people to buy and develop, and we're finding that people love to buy and live right across the street from a gorgeous waterfront. We're building a huge fountain at the cruise ship terminal entranceway, and the people who buy this, these condos in this development will get a spectacular view of a fountain. They will be able to see the red car running by every day, and they will, and they'll be right across the street from the cruise terminal and get to see the beautiful cruise ships coming in and out day and night. So I just wanted to stand up and highlight this project and say that we are really doing some things right in San Pedro, and I appreciate the interest from developers to invest in San Pedro, to invest in Los Angeles, and I guarantee all these projects will be very successful because they're taking advantage of, again, this instant entertainment and attraction on our waterfront. So I hope you'll support me in this zone change. I think it makes a lot of sense, and we are certainly, along with this hundred fifty-eight unit condominium project, we've got about thirteen hundred units of housing just in downtown San Pedro, which, again, we've heard is a recipe for success for all the businesses that are there, the restaurants that are there. This will bring a population that will really enjoy what's, enjoy the businesses that are already there and help support many more to come. So thank you, and I hope you'll support me on this.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, and thank you for your impressive work down there. So, however, for that, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item thirteen called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item number thirteen, the retirement system smoothing period.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a amended motion circulating and which merely gives them two instructions that we'd like to add to the committee report.
Okay. Has that been circulated, or do you want to?
Yes, it's been circulated.
All right. Okay, let's just hold that on desk, make sure that the clerk has a copy, and we'll come back to that in just one moment. Stick up the next item.
Number twenty was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
All right, we have item number twenty called special by Mr. Rosendahl, and he will be right back, so let's go to the next item, please.
Item number twenty-seven called special for a card from the public.
All right, Zuma Dog on item twenty-seven.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What's up with the dough? Cut the Zuma Dog on TV thirty-five, y'all. Cut the Zuma Dog on, yeah, yeah. I would like you to Bill Rosendahl could have been here for this, but that's okay. Jan Perry, I'd like to ask you a question. This, to me, looks like something good for the city. Let me notify the citizens of Los Angeles that the Los Angeles Homeless Service will be adjusting funding for emergency shelter beds between February and June. So what this looks like to me is that they're decreasing the money that they were paying to one shelter because it looks like they were paying way too much and getting a bad deal, and then they're taking the surplus four hundred thousand dollars that they're going to be saving and getting thirty-one emergency shelter beds. So it sounds like you're just trying to get a better deal for your money to get more beds. And so, Jan Perry, I'm going to yield my time. If you can stand up and clarify, I noticed it wasn't called special. It's something very important. Jan Perry, could you please let the citizens know about this important thing, y'all?
Thank you very much. Close our public comment on this. Anybody wishing to be heard from council? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. And do you have the amending material for thirteen, Madam?
Yes, Madam President, it has been distributed.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll on thirteen, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. That is, that is approved. We did have public speaker cards for twenty-nine colleagues, so I'm going to ask to reconsider that. There's one card for that, if there's no objection. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That's back before us, and I'd like to ask Christine Springett to come forward. Thank you for your patience.
Good morning. Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you for your time. My name is Christine Springett. I'm a city planner with the City Planning Department of the City of L.A., represented by the Engineers and Architects Association. Did all of you get the one-sheet handout?
Yes, it's been circulated. Thank you.
Oh, great, thank you. I'll just kind of go over some of the main bullet points, but wanted to call your attention to the improper and potentially fraudulent nature of the election, which is bullet-pointed in the one-sheet. There's a number of reasons why the ballot was not properly managed, the ballots were not verifiable, and a broad base of city employees represented by the Engineers and Architects Association are desiring a new vote, a valid vote by independent party Sequoia Voting Systems in San Bernardino. We urge you to deny this measure at the very least, postpone approval on this ratification for the reason that the election itself was conducted in a potentially fraudulent way and is nonverifiable. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you. Any members wishing to be heard on item number twenty-nine before us?
Vamos a abrir la votación.
Now, let's open the roll.
Vamos a abrir la votación.
Oh, is there another? I only had one, I'm sorry. If there's somebody else, let's halt. If there's somebody else, why don't you come forward? Just give us your name.
Hay hay más que va a hablar, por favor, díganos su nombre.
I'm sorry, I did have it here. There's actually two more cards.
Sí, dos más.
Heidi, Rita Lopez, and then Alfredo Perez.
Hi, el señor Alfredo Perez, mis disculpas.
Good morning, city council, honorable members. My name is Heidi Rita Lopez, and I am a proud worker of the city. And today I'm here because my colleagues asked me to represent them today, and it's very simple. We would just like for you to take a few minutes and just reconsider this item and look at how the election was conducted. I am a very proponent of unions. My family is on the union family, and we believe that the way that the election was conducted is questionable, so we are asking for your support. We're asking for your support. We're asking for your support. We're asking for your support. I work with planners. The EAA represents workers that work in building and safety, DOT, and all my other colleagues, and we're just asking for a fair review of the election. So today we ask for your support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alfredo Perez?
Hi, Alfredo Perez. I work in environmental section of City Planning, and I just want to express my experience with my union representatives just prior to January tenth. What had occurred was I contacted the representative and asked if I would be able to vote, and was told that I wasn't eligible until my six-month probation was up. So I accepted it, but I'm understanding that that's not apparently correct. The exact words that he used were that technically I don't exist until six months have elapsed. So I was a little surprised, but just wanted to express that.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Are there any other public speakers on this item?
Algunos oradores públicos en este artículo.
Not, if I could just instruct, vis-à-vis the public comment, if I can ask our CEO to report back to ERC on any election irregularities, and that we can track them. Anybody, if anybody else wishes to be heard, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. That is approved, and that will be scheduled for ERC as well. Thank you. Okay. Item number twenty called special by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a amendment to this motion. I just want to reallocate the hundred fifty thousand from the unallocated funds to the Crestwood Hills Park for facility enhancement instead of Rustic Canyon. Crestwood Hills Park needs renovation of its bathroom and other facilities, and we're moving money around within the context of the parks, and I'd like very much to have my colleagues' support. Tom LeBonge did second this motion for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Couldn't have a finer seconder. All right, thank you. Anybody wishing to be heard on this?
Gracias.
Not, let's go ahead and open the roll.
Vamos a abrir la votación.
Close the roll. Would you like to set the record?
I'd actually like to thank Councilmember LeBonge for his wonderful show of support when we hosted the state here. He ran down to the cars. We actually, I'm sorry, my name is Jacqueline Wagner, and I'm with the CAO's office, I staff the Prop K Alfred Kid staring committee, and just recently we had an opportunity to host six delegates from the State Department of, State Regs and Parks Department. And over the State Prop twelve and forty funds that they had, they've earmarked for the city of L.A., and Councilmember LeBonge was just wonderful. He prepared certificates, he came down, he greeted everyone individually, and it really worked out well. So I just wanted to thank him because we haven't had an opportunity to thank him for that.
Thank you.
We promise that we are going to bring all of our reports to your committee in the future.
Thank you. And let the record reflect that Mr. Parks was noticeably moved by that. All right, with that, we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
The excuse is on the desk. Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Wednesday, February seventh, to leave at eleven a.m. for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, he is excused.
Council President Garcetti requests to be excused Tuesday, February twenty-seventh for city business. That meets council policy.
Thank you. He is excused.
Councilmember Weezer requests to be excused Tuesday, February thirteenth for city business, Tuesday, March sixth for personal, and Wednesday, February twenty-first, that's also for city, and a motion is required on the twenty-first.
Okay, if it takes us to eleven?
Yes, it does.
Okay, I'll move that. Mr. Cardinal, seconds.
And then Councilmember Grohl requests to be excused Friday, February sixteenth, to leave at twelve forty-five for city business. A motion is required, and that leaves eleven.
Okay, I will move it. Mr. Zian, seconds. Excuse is granted.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Announcements? Mr. Parks, Mr. Parks, and then Mr. LeBonge.
I'd like to announce that the next community meeting of the Budget and Finance Committee will be February twelfth at Epic Center, thirty-nine eighty South Menlo. It will deal, basically, address budget issues and invite the communities of CD eight, nine, and fifteen. Also, for high school juniors and seniors, Edison is promoting a free internship in the engineering camp, and contact number seven one three seven four three four two two six. And then also, the Exposition Authority is having their community update meeting on Wednesday, February seventh, at the USC Galen Center. And then also, for those who are riding public transportation, there are five meetings in the, during February that is sponsored by MTA, on today's, or tomorrow, February seventh, at San Fernando Valley Sector, will be at the Marvin Browdy Center. On February eighth, at the Gateway Cities, will be at the Gas Company on Firestone, South Bay on February ninth, and Carson Community Center. February twelfth, San Gabriel Valley Sector at six p.m., and also the West Side Central[1765.16] Central Sector on February 14th. There'll be over 50 changes in the bus system that will be discussed at those five meetings. And the final announcement is that on Saturday, February 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00, is free cash for College Day, and that, there'll be at least 25 schools in the area that will be giving presentations from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and the callback number is 888-CAGRANT is the callback number. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
I just want to wish everybody a good Tuesday there, Mr. President. We're okay there. A citizen was speeding this morning. As I got out of my car on Silver Lake Boulevard, they passed another car above the W line right by Armstrong. I was just getting in my car, raised my hands to remind them there in the street. He gave me half a peace sign. So, if you see a Range Rover in Silver Lake, we want to send that person to anger management or the city attorney's office.
Thank you. We will look out for that. If there's no objection, Mr. Rosendahl asked for number 20 to go forthwith, so we'll send that forthwith if there's no objection. I also wanted to announce really quickly, and then I'll get you guys over here, that from Mr. Reyes's district, in the back, we have two new council ambassadors, Raúl Cruz Santos and Paddy Durán, who are from Lincoln High School, CD 1, part of our ongoing ambassadors that help people navigate the choppy waters of council and explain all of the ins and outs. So, we want to thank them for volunteering their time for the city and thank Mr. Reyes for being their great rep. And with that, I'll recognize Mr. Reyes and Ms. Perry.
Mr. President, I just wanted to rise and recognize the occasion of your birth, which I believe was 36 years ago this past Sunday, and to recognize your, give them a big hand. Oh, and we do have cupcakes, and they're blue because you're a boy, a man, a man-boy. And, well, we didn't want to get pink frosting. We got blue frosting for you.
I'm very comfortable with pink, too.
That's right. And I say that you have, you have aged well gracefully, and you are a fine president, and we want you to enjoy this, these cupcakes as recognition of your many years of service and life.
Thank you so much, Ms. Perry. Very, very sweet of you. Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Your shirt, very nice.
Thank you.
I did want to invite everyone to an incredible play over. It's called The Playhouse Theater Players. They are located at the brewery in Lincoln Heights, 600 Molton Avenue. The focus of the play is the Mary Allen Pleasant story. And I referred to it earlier. Essentially, this is the, one of the first African-American women millionaires, essentially in San Francisco, and how she traveled from New Orleans to San Francisco, and her focus was how she was able to garner property and resources, money, and actually help folks get out of the South, create jobs, stabilize communities. Her role with John Brown and what happened during the fight for freedom. And it is truly an amazing play. It's very quaint, very small theater house. It will be playing through May 25th on Saturdays at 8:30, Sundays at 3:00 p.m. The number is 323-227-5410. Couple of years ago, Bernard Parks himself had the pleasure of honoring him here in council as they were producing a great production about all the movie stars of the 40s and 50s. So, we want to talk about history, reinforcement of positive characteristics of our country. She truly is a historic figure that we should be aware of, and I truly believe it. It will instill that self-esteem that many young people need and understand our history. So, I invite you all to the Playhouse Theater, 600 Molton Avenue, the Mary Allen Pleasant Story.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Other announcements? Mr. Zain?
President, one is I want to acknowledge the city attorney's office that they are going to be having this afternoon a special meeting, San Fernando Valley Coalition on gangs. I want to acknowledge the city attorney's office for that. We will be attending that at 2:00 at the West Valley Police Station. Also, this evening for neighborhood councils, at 6:30, a Publicary Neighborhood Council Review Commission at Irwin Street Elementary School at 13400 Irwin in Valley Glen. That'll be this evening at 6:30, the Publicary Neighborhood Council Review Commission for individuals interested in neighborhood councils. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge, did you have? Okay. If I can ask everybody to please rise in council chambers for adjourning motions.
Members, I'd like to ask you adjourned in memory of Kathleen Crowe, former chief deputy to supervisor Mike Antonovich. Additionally, I'd like to ask you adjourned in memory of John Green, who was the regional vice president for Farmers Insurance headquartered in the Wilshire District. He had a tragic single-vehicle accident just recently. He survived by his family. Ask you adjourned in memory of John Green, Farmers Insurance.
Thank you very much. Other adjourning motions, colleagues? Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just have three. First one is for Alberta Davis. She is loving sister, aunt, and friend of those who knew and loved her, and she was the aunt and godmother of Trisha Wallace, who is a receptionist in my city hall office. She was born in November of 1927 in Jefferson County, Arkansas, and moved to Los Angeles over 50 years ago. Upon arriving in Los Angeles, she found work as a seamstress in the city of Homers and worked as a seamstress for many years until she decided to retire and devote her time to her family and friends. And when she was with her family, she loved to shop, cook, and laugh, and she will be missed by all who knew her. She was preceded in death by her husband, David Randall, leaves behind a brother, Otto Davis, and sister Laverne Davis. And just in honor of Black History Month or African-American History Month, I wanted to also remember Barbara McNair, who passed away and was born in March 4th, 1934, in Racine, Wisconsin. And at a very early age, she began her singing career. And she moved to Los Angeles to attend UCLA, but after a year went to New York to pursue her dreams, and her move to New York paid off in big dividends, and she became a very well-known singer in the clubs throughout the country, including the Coconut Grove in Los Angeles, on the Ed Sullivan Show, and she made the transition from nightclub to the Broadway stage. 1963, she followed Diane Carroll in the lead role of the Broadway hit No Strings, and she also played on the big screen alongside such heavyweights as Elvis Presley and Sidney Poitier. One of her proudest moments was in 1969, when the syndicated Barbara McNair Show premiered. Guests on that show included people like Bob Hope, Johnny Mathis, and B.B. King. She is survived by her husband, Charles Black, along with a sister, Jacqueline Gather, and many nieces and nephews. And also, in memory of Pedro Knight, and there is an art installation at the California African-American Museum right now, and it included some of Celia Cruz's costumes, and he was in many of the photographs there. He was a former lead trumpet player for Cuba's legendary band, La Sonora Matancera, and the devoted husband of the late Queen of Salsa, Celia Cruz. Knight and Cruz met in Havana in 1950 when she became the new lead singer of La Sonora Matancera, and he loved her in silence for 12 years before he finally admitted his true feelings for her. And after 12 years, they were finally together, and in 1960, they decided to leave Cuba. They toured Mexico and the United States before finally marrying in 1962. And in the late 1960s, he stepped down as a lead trumpet player and became Celia's music director. He had great love and admiration for his wife. He was always onstage with her, opened doors for her, and took her hand when they crossed the street, and even accompanied her, accompanied her when she went for a manicure. That's true devotion. And he was, he is survived by his daughter, Ernestina Knight of Tampa, Florida, four children in Cuba, Pedro, Robert, Amelia, and Gladys. And he was a loving and compassionate man. He will never be forgotten.
Thank you. I remember when we had Celia Cruz Square dedicated, and he was there. It was a wonderful moment. I can second that. Mr. Zain?
President, request adjourned in memory of Laura LeWeger, passed away January 22nd. Laura was a gregarious West Hills child who spent 13 years in the Girl Scouts, helped start the Boeing Explorers Rocket Group en route to joining the United States Navy, voted Miss Popularity at Knogel Park High School. She lived for her friends and family, for Jesus, and for her dream of flying. She turned 26 on January 22nd, the day she shipped out for helicopter training at Naval Base Coronado in San Diego, the city where she spent most of the past six years since rolling at University San Diego. Laura was married to a Navy pilot. In two months, she would head to the Middle East to assist the American military efforts in Iraq. Navy Lieutenant J.G. Laura J. McNeese helicopter went down with three other sailors during a routine training at Naval Base Coronado in San Diego. All three sailors presumed dead. She will be truly missed by her family and friends. Her video will never be forgotten. She survived by her parents, Lilian and Leonard, her husband, Jeff, two brothers, three sisters, and many other extended family members. May she rest in peace.
Thank you. I'd like to second that as well. Thank you. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. We will next meet on Wednesday, tomorrow, the 7th of February, here in John Farrow Council Chambers. Have a great afternoon, and this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.